I'm now pretty.
It's six o'clock, so I'm calling this meeting to the board. Good evening and welcome everyone. Meeting is being recorded and will be available on the city's YouTube channel. Just a reminder to the audience, whether you are presenting or just commenting on an agenda topic, please come to the podium and wait to be recognized. Name and address. There's a seven minute time limit. Honesty is not acceptable. Non-agenda items can present be presented under citizens, not on the agenda, but will not be discussed by the council. Above all, please show courtesy and respect at all times. Thank you. Roll call please.
Hey, Walker. Yeah, Walker. My tier, Audrey.
Help the member, Wayne Wright, absent. Moving on to the consent agenda, I have one note for the council and audience. We are going to be moving items seventeen and eighteen up after item number eight. With some circumstances beyond our control. In one part of the consent agenda, the monitoring board who started here yet, they just met last. One other comment that I have on the consent agenda, I asked Cynthia to include under the consent agenda in the financial reports area, debt pay off. And I think it's always good to celebrate when we pay off debt, especially at this point here. And if you'll notice, just on June first, that we did pay off one million two hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Well, that was what the most start at.
That one gone away and then you see the candidate for Cynthia. Do the council have any questions or comments on that consent agenda?
Motion. Second.
All the people please.
I, I, I.
Thank you. Move on to reports. I see the shortage of videos here. If you'd like, please step to the podium. Yeah, please. So we can hear you.
Deputy Wayne from Lynn County, we've fulfilled the seventy, seventy-eight hours of required service with eighty-seven calls to search the city with the surveillance.
Council, do you have any questions or concerns for the deputy? I talked with Major Colston a couple of things throughout the course of the last month, such as dirt bikes.
Yes, I just had a call today for that over in the Hartland Estates.
Hartley.
Over in the Hartland Estates.
Hartley. You got a call today?
I did get a call today.
Okay.
I didn't see anything specifically that we could enforce. Um, there is a COVID section playing in the streets, which is kind of lax concerning that. Um, it's. I don't know why you guys want to face that.
The dirt bikes are allowed on the street.
What CC? Is there a certain CC or?
They're just off-road bikes, little dirt bikes, supposed to be.
Yeah, those are not licensed dirt bikes on the street. Okay, so you want us to?
Yeah, Major Colston asked the guidance, so I'm going to check with him.
I'll see you in front of the email or whatever that is.
Yeah, you know, I think we know. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
What, what's the guy? What's the?
There's a stakehold that supports that dirt bikes per se are not allowed on city streets.
Oh, so it's all.
They're underage, licensed vehicles.
Thank you. Okay. Most of your reports are in your absence. Anyone have any question or comment?
I'm going for Chris. They say no, they were here earlier, but was there any response to your email chain regarding the hookup? Yeah.
Uh, so yeah, I put together a letter this morning outlining what council had decided at the last meeting. What the toll they would owe also included the payment options if they need to, if they want to request that to get hold the city hall, why move the number of the extension, proper extension. Uh, I did get an email response from Lynn County Health, looked like they're wanting to pursue this. So I have requested to be on the Board of Supervisors' agenda for their next meeting to go through with them.
So even though we explicitly told them that they have to hook onto sanitary sewer because they're within a hundred feet, which we've already provided all that documentation. And they were expressly told that Lynn County is still trying to buy it.
Yes, that's exactly how I put it, buy it. And what's the reasoning for that? Since she, you won't give me a reason. You, if you read the email, I asked her to question in several different ways. What's your reasoning behind this? They put the answer. So, so yeah, I have a question right now to be on the next supervisor's meeting. Uh, just in the effort to save any legal costs for both entities. Let's just get this out in the open and talk about it and see if we can't get it cleared out. I, I, I think I called and did my email jurisdictional bullying. I think that's the only way I can describe it. I mean, since we're going to be at the Board of Supervisors meeting discussing it, I'm also going to bring up the well and request that the well be capped. Those two properties be hooked to the city water service as they should have been last year. Any other question?
When would you expand just a little bit about what's going to happen on Seventy-Sixth Avenue in Williams, so the council understands. Send a slightly different than the development agreement.
So for the springtime before we did any agreements, it's so important, Seventy-Sixth and Williams who had.
Please, please, sorry, I cannot believe it all.
Yeah.
That would be that, yes.
Well, in the springtime before all the agreements were all signed and negotiated, Seventy-Sixth and Williams Boulevard south of town had a lot more excessive traffic in the spring, the saw. So a lot of the roads were moving around and the part that we have chipped and sealed, that kind of eve broke up a little bit. And that was even after road builders and I looked at some initial wear. So they agreed to repair or fix that porch once we sent them a bill. So when they're talking to them, the agreements got signed, we talked to them and they talked to Joy about it. And they're actually.
When you're referring to like.
Link construction and they're, they're actually going to chip and seal, I think it's what is it? Another room down there, another ground room down there heading towards Wright Brother. And while they're having to do that, they're going to come in and do Seventy-Sixth all the way up to the highway. So that part that we were going to repair and send them the bill, they're just going to do it for the agreement. And we don't have to do the money exchange. So, and that should happen here the next few weeks. But the same thing, road builders are hoping to come in the end of this week to do what we already talked about. But with the weather last few, last week, they might be delayed. So since this week, they'll be some, some upstairs. So we've been kind of going back and forth, but a little, telling it's got you there portion. A way of curricular building to ours.
You have a small section of authority chips here.
Yeah, from one fifty-one to Southview Frank, you have just across the track. They think with the contract they have with telling they're giving them a better deal because they're doing everything else. So they're getting at a higher cheaper rate. But, but they're still doing the double silicone, just like we talked about. So could be a win.
Any other questions on any of the monthly reports you have?
Good job, Lynn.
Good jobs and fire burnout and all the virus. I can't wait until next year.
Better, better.
Yeah. No rain. Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
First time, sure, cheers.
Okay. We will move on to item number six, discussion on possible motion concerning a request from the brand said.
I have the podium, what if we ever ready to listen? My name's Elizabeth, I live at one fifty West Cemetery Road in Grand Bay, Iowa. Um, I am asking to be able to shoot my handgun in my backyard for target practice. Um, I read in your city ordinance that it's unlawful to shoot a gun in city limits unless we get written consent from the council. And so I'm wondering, um, if I could get written consent and, um, if not, like what kind of person would be able to get consent? Why was that law or that ordinance written that way? Um, I've included in your handout picture of my house on the assessors page. Um, I've included picture of my backyard. I actually have, I live in into a hill. And then there's a field behind me and another field behind that. Um, I guess the reason that I want to do this is for safety for myself and I have two boys, six and three, and my husband's out of town. And I don't feel like I have the protection that I need. Um, I do have a gun, but I would just like to be able to practice a little more with it and it would be during daylight hours. Um, and if that's not okay, it's kind of like a time when I could shoot it. Um, but yeah, I just kind of want your thoughts so I can jot down and see what people think.
Also questions?
Other than organizing babysitting, is there a reason you just don't go to the range like the one on Sixteenth over by um, right down the road here by Ben Franklin?
Is, um, is that a monitored range?
The indoor one?
It's in the basement of the ghost shop there.
Indoor, is that cost?
I'm trying to remember the last time I went there, how much it's like, yeah, it's like what?
Fifteen bucks.
Fifteen bucks.
Fifteen bucks.
Right, I go there every once in a while with my kids and practice.
Yeah, I was just thinking for convenience and my kids live there at school. I can just go right out my backyard. I have, um, have something that I can shoot at into the hill. I saw there was, um, the O's sheet that I got. Um, this is signatures from my neighbors. Um, I kind of wanted to talk about this because this actually bothered me more than anything because I figured everyone would say no. But, um, so I received this and it was actually a day and a half after I sent this to Cynthia Simpson. I sent this request to be on the agenda. And then about a day and a half later, I got this paper saying, actually, I didn't even get the paper. Someone called my husband. They didn't even call me. They called my husband and said, hey, uh, there's a petition against your wife's stuff. Do you want to take back what you're doing? Something along those lines. Um, so I was kind of surprised by that. And I wondered who actually started that petition since I hadn't even made this request yet. Could someone fill me in on that information?
Well, I can tell you, I'm the one who called your husband.
Yes, I do know. I didn't want to bring your name into it, but yes.
I just called him because I wanted to do the P and Z and I had learned of this petition. And I just wanted to make you guys aware. I didn't have your number. I didn't spend a lot of time on it. I just made a quick phone call.
And yeah, I didn't want to bring your name in, but I did wonder where the petition got started.
And, um, as soon as I received your request, it's public info. So I did let, um, a resident who goes up to that area frequently that I know, know about the request and she and her family started the petition.
Okay, so and actually, um, that's kind of what I figured. I figured because Stacy works, if you're right, Kleinfelter, yeah, I told Stacy Kleinfelter. And then she told her parents that live on top of the hill. I didn't like background checks on everyone up there. Um, but one person that actually concerns me, um, lives right by me, who is a convicted felon and burglar. And that is another reason that I want to be able to have this, um, practice in my backyard too. And it's actually a person that signed this form. So that kind of bothered me as well.
Yeah, so my thoughts are, I mean, yes, you need to protect yourself. Um, we have a right to have guns. You should be educated on how you, the, so that hopefully never, but if the time comes that you can. I would be really concerned. This is not against you, but of opening up any kind of liability for not only you, the city, anyone else starting a precedent like this. So the, the ordinance says I, uh, I guess perceived to be written is if there's an event or demonstration that the city then would have heard like twenty-one guns salute of some sort, that that occurs, not a, not a resident saying that, no, I want to go fire burnout, park it, practice, whatever it is. But I, I would be very worried about the precedent that that would set up.
Sure. And that, that's really clarifying for me to know what that written consent would be for because I wasn't, I wasn't sure what that would be. You know, in that form, but the twenty-one guns was making sense.
I would say I checked real quick, a range be at sixteen thousand, twenty dollars an hour and it has hours posted on their site. Um, I've shot a lot of guns off in my life. You can never own, the only thing I like more than fireworks with guns. Um, with that said, I mean, unless you're building an actual range where it like goes into the ground. You have worms on the back and the front with sand to slow the bullet down, even if accidental discharge directly north of your property is Hartland High is the last street. I don't remember the street name, but one of the ponds, so. You know, it might get some return fire, but, um, in all sincerity, that's just going to continue to develop out. So I share your concerns, you know, living, um, next to someone who's a convicted felon, uh, I encourage on record probably much of people should run if someone breaks through your house to shoot them dead. Um, but I would say go practice at a range. I know there's an inconvenience doing that and it's easier to do in your backyard. But, uh, I agree with the safety, but there's also the safety of surrounding people in the case of accidental discharge. Not saying will, but for strapping. That'd be the last thing you would want.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, I would not want that.
Have you checked out Green Castle? I know that one's free.
Ken.
Sure, yeah, there's a lot of rings. Any of yours is one I can.
Sure.
Our shop is right next to it, so let's.
Ken, I guess the one I was thinking of when I was looking into this was, you know, by some family, they live by the river. It's like Swisher kind of. That's the one I was thinking of. I'm like, there is no one out there. You are all by yourself. But if you guys feel like those places are safe places that you can practice, like as a solo female, you know, if there's other females going out there.
I, I go out there, I go.
You do, and you feel good.
Yeah, I mean, I take my AR fifteen out there and I can have a, I can have a good time and will stuff up, so.
And there's ages that are indoor that have cameras going. And if you're looking to be, to get some instructional training, you can use some of them. It gets more confidence with handling the gun, one-on-one or class seminars. You know, if you're looking for more comfort, the fact that you know there's cameras behind you, where the shoes could be, um, could be comforting as well. So then in general, ten bucks an hour or for all day, depending reasonable, all things considered. So just open to what, to what they say opens up a can of worms, I think. You know, if you're doing that in your backyard where that bullet could travel, albeit not on purpose, plus neighbors around. Opens up a can of worms that I don't think anybody really wants to have. Here's right.
Absolutely. Okay, with that information, I have a page this back then and we don't have to go any further with this. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, move on to item number seven, discussion concerns city's financial aid. For the library edition project, council, you're back and a couple of things. Um, one was the request made by the foundation board a couple of years ago. Basically amounted to a nine dollar contribution from the city towards proposed library edition. And then also you have an email from one of our financial advisors, Maggie Burger. That indicates this may be subject to a public referendum. So questions, discussion?
I do want to note that, that library foundation handout, I think that's in a word from, word for word, what was his name, Scott? Who was it?
So Bruce, Bruce is here to my group.
Now, who's the other gentleman?
Miss, Miss, Miss.
Miss, yes. And, and that's fine. It's word for word on what he had said because there's a lot of adjustments and changes that were made. For example, digging ground fiscal year twenty-six and, or in two thousand twenty-six. And as far as where does the money come from? So I want to make sure that it's known that it appears that this document is just based off the presentation that he had. Unintentional, but I don't think it's completely accurate. It's definitely within the ballpark, but, um, it is, so the goals of when and mentioning the other towns. Marion, Hyawatha, all that. So I wanted to make sure that was be put on record.
Question I have for you, council, because the fundings was looking for, you know, retired to our normal budget time. If you see Maggie's email, the, uh, because this would be a, a non-essential corporate purpose is a reason it might be subject to a public referendum. Plus, the amount would be in excess of five hundred and thirty-four thousand plus. It might be subject to public referendum. We don't know that for a fact, but high probability. There's council wanting us to try to find out one way or another, whether this don't have to require a public referendum or what's your thoughts on all of it?
Is the lot included? And so is the project, is the lot technically part of the project?
Where I'm borrowing money for the loan?
No, I, I, okay, understood, but I thought, oh, there's only one.
Yeah, it's the law. This is only what we have to borrow, you know, support the request.
Maybe someone can refresh my memory, but didn't we say our support was purchasing the lot? But the vast, vast majority of the funds to be raised to build this had to be done by the five oh one. And now with less than twelve months later, and they're saying, site actually, we want a million dollars. Is that what happened or am I misremembering?
That was what they presented in their presentation a month or two ago, that they rented themselves. No, they wanted a substantial.
That's a month or two ago. I'm talking about before.
No, they were, I watched about that.
Initially, they said, the council said, you raise the money would give you better support. I think that's how it was.
And that we purchased the lot to help facilitate that.
Bruce, do you have any comments that would help the council with this point?
Certainly, I was waiting because I knew.
Waiting for them.
Not on the agenda, so I do, um, yeah, so you're, you're, you're accurate. It's not, I don't know that we said site, but but I mean, we can start that way. What we've learned in fundraising, um, and certainly in research around the other area communities that have added in Marion has been a in a sort of a lighthouse force that we've looked at. The major portions of what we can get will come from grants, um, something like Hall, Berine, something like that, that foundation. Their first question and a critical element in, in them providing a brand is is your city financially invested in this? Because we feel like your city needs to be the one that shoulders the, in the major part of the debt. And that was new to us. I mean, so last time this went around in nineteen ninety-one, which is a long time ago. Um, you know, some of you were kids. I was old then, but, um, it was all private funding, I mean, it was all, um, but so we've learned that since and that's really why we came back because that's going to be critical to fundraising. So, yeah, I mean, came on us that we didn't know that in the beginning, maybe we were too optimistic, but that's what we've learned and that's why we're asking. I don't know if that helps or just muddies the water.
He, here's what's, what's tough for me to wrap my head around. To commit to a certain amount of dollars. We're just starting our fiscal year, right? How do you earmark X amount of dollars for possibly the next fiscal year? And we don't even know what the state of Fairfax is going to be, what emergencies we have. Obviously, we're all aware of what major projects we have and, you know, I'll say major, um, it's hard to look that far. It's difficult, right?
Yeah.
To look nine months down the road, six months down the road, or whatever, to say, okay, we're just going to take this amount of the pie off and just designate that. Yeah, that's hard. I mean, now like this December, January, February, now we're a little bit different situation, right? I mean, I'm just telling you through my eyes, I'm what's hard to say, how much do you want to earmark towards that, right? Um, I, I understand that I've heard it many times is everybody wants to hear, is Fairfax? Are we behind it? Well, we've been supportive of it, right? Giving money so far twenty-five thousand and fifty thousand dollars. The total was seventy-five, right? So far. So if you want to use your dollars, that's supportive, but, but to actually say how many zeros are involved in that? I don't know, Bruce, if it's fair time to be able to come together and to say something to earmark that. I, I don't know. I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying yes, but I understand on this end, how, how do you are you come up with that this time of the fiscal year?
So a question for you. I mean, maybe this is a thought, I'm so we know that in November, you know, the books start to open and we start to say, well, it's been planned for the next fiscal year. And that really doesn't get completed until what about March? Maybe it's when the final approval is on that. Really, in my mind, what I would think, that we would be trying to get a commitment for, starting in July of twenty twenty-six, which is that next fiscal year, which, you know, rather than you saying we want nine hundred, and maybe we, we came off saying we want nine hundred thousand, you know, starting in October, um, maybe the better answer is, and maybe I'm throwing this back to you as, as an option that we'd like to talk about is to say, we would like to be in, I guess, I would tell it year two, right? What is currently, I mean, because right now we're in the middle of year one of our, of our capital improvement plan. We'd like to be in year two, knowing that year two is a discussion point, right? Year one is the only thing etched in the books. Year two is a, is a discussion point, right? Each year, I mean, I think we put a one, yeah. So I mean, that's maybe what we're asking for, the commitment to be able to discuss that, something we can use to grab fundraising to say, the city hasn't said no. I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, something that gives us a little bit of weight with, with fundraising as, and it still doesn't commit the city to anything, you know, hard because, uh, you know, every year we open the discussion of what the next year's capital improvement. Uh, um, you know, every year we open the discussion of what the next year's capital improvement actual spends are going to be. So we know that there can't be a hard commitment until that's done and approved at one, right?
So I think looking back, if I'm selling, you're selling to a potential donor. What has Fairfax done so far? They bought property. It's on the agenda for tonight.
Right.
Um, gave twenty-five thousand dollars in last fiscal year.
Right.
I give another fifty thousand this fiscal, fiscal year, but. Right now it's at a tough time because we're early in the fiscal year to talk about the problem.
Right, right.
Um, so Mr. Or Mrs. Donor, it's. Here, here's what we know. Here's what's happened so far.
Yeah.
So that snowball is, is, is started.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Um. I don't know if it's fair to say that. You have to have a dollar amount on what's committed by Fairfax, two or two each and every donor.
But no, I, I would, I would agree, especially not to any new owners out of this, these foundations, and if we're going out, that's worth fine, that's individual donors, you know. Um, and I, and I, I think from our standpoint, um, what I can say is. We will come back at budget time, you know, and saying we'd like to be in year one for the following year. Um, you know, with this nine hundred thousand. It's a discussion point, right? I mean, it's, is it going to happen or not? Which is the normal part of the process, right? I mean, so, is that, I mean, to me, that, that feasible to.
So if you want them to decide in March or April that they're going to put that money into a library in fiscal. Twenty-seven, which is the budget they would be working on. If it needs to go to a referendum, it has to be on the ballot this November with a super majority approval. I'm not sure. I can find out, but I'm not exactly sure, but it's gotta be soon to get something on the referendum. Uh, they changed the state law and, and those kinds of things can only be on the November ballot. So you don't do it this November, you're not gonna know in April for the next budget.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? I, I, I was not aware of that. I did a little bit of research and I, maybe. If I'm asking a clarifying question about the referendum. Um, just going back to the way that Marion did it, not that Marion did everything right, to say the way that they did it. They uh, went out to issue a bond for several million dollars, I think seven million dollars for debt. Eighteen million dollar library project, so different scope. But uh, their comments were when they did that was that they needed to put out a public notice of their intent to issue a bond. And then there was a time period that, that allowed residents to petition for a referendum. Is that, am I misunderstanding?
It's, um, the million is too large of an amount for us to do as a reverse referendum. The limit is five hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Okay.
Then it has to do with site population of.
That's it, is it? It's not based on violation of our town or over it.
Yeah, I don't know what Marion's limit would be. I know that's our, that's our thing, surely.
So then, then maybe to address that, we might be coming back with the November SCAP and. What we say are recommendations, like five hundred and thirty-four thousand. I mean, something that falls under the referendum. I mean, to me, if we're asking for like a million dollars. Okay, well, let's ask for five hundred. Over two years and not do a referendum. I mean, let's find a way to make this work. That's all. Isn't the project cost, is it full brother? Not. Hurt mom.
I think it's bonding, but what to borrow? I'm not sure you're supposed to break that, break bonds to try to employ. I mean, maybe what they should be focusing on now is to convince the residents for interim of the sixty percent. Super.
Support.
Supportive project.
So is that up for just, I mean, you have something on? Well, that would be up to them to get it, you know, on the ballot in November, so I'd have to wait two years.
When's our timeframe for getting that onto ballot?
I, I can call the audit office tomorrow and find out, but it's not instant.
That's what I was thinking. I thought we were probably.
We're not, we're not past it already, but that's just put it on the ballot. But your work to convince, you know, you have until the day of the election to convince the residents.
Right. Can you clarify? I mean, this is for me and I'm sorry to take a lot of time, but a super majority, if we talked about that, what?
Had sixty percent.
I think it's.
Thirty percent or two thirds.
I think sixty percent.
So sixty percent of the people that showed up to vote would have to say yes. Have to say yes, okay. Um, I, I think we gotta think this back, our board, obviously I'm not speaking. I can't answer for the whole board. We, we realize it was a short time period. We'll, we'll take it back to the board and Cynthia, we'll give that back to you, but I guess what I would say. Yeah, we'll just, we'll just do that. We'll probably be showing up here next month. Counselor, maybe give me another day.
And, and maybe you can remind me, because I don't remember. It's been a while. When, one of the questions that we posed to is you have about a million dollars in money from the amount that's still there and burdened. Did you ever go to the engineering firm or the, the company that designed it said, we have a million dollars? Tell me what we can get for a million dollars.
Um, no, we've not done that, but uh, yeah, I mean, I don't remember. I would be interested. I, yeah. Any other questions for? Thank you.
Okay, next item, number eight. Consider a motion to enter the purpose agreement of the third tax state savings bank. This is in regard to. Partner lot. That we propose purchasing from the bank in anticipation of the library. The bank has signed off on it. The library board has approved it. So the next step.
If you get back or, or, or whatever.
No, that we didn't initiate that, so. And then the attorney said there's a sixty day window that we need to get that accomplished, bye. So we had talked about the environmental. Study, but that won't start unless you approve this, bye.
You have to do an environmental study on concrete and gravel.
That's what our attorney recommended.
It was a history. Was the natural soil sample.
Right.
Um, there's two other places.
This is level one. So. Unless you have questions, I'm sooner or I'm often to. Enter into this purchase agreement. Go on, please.
I. May, I, I.
Okay. So we, after that first order until now, we'll. And also he's been gathering some information on companies that could do the environmental study.
Same, I actually said, hey, oh, sir, um, I'm for the library expansion.
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to move item seventeen and eighteen up at this point. Item seventeen, discussion. And what we're most concerning the design scope of the pickleball court. Change success. Well, we have a new set of information we have.
If you want something up on the screen, just want me to know which.
Yeah, the, I can't really see. There's a lot of different items that I, I see which, but. Basically, just a little background, um. It was on the budget for the pickleball, tennis, tennis court, pickleball courts. Um. And we had had for the, the planning, the budget was six hundred thousand. And it was basically two tennis courts, full-size tennis courts, just like the existing one down there. That can be also utilized for pickleball courts. So then when we met with the staff to kind of go through the details. Um, you know, Joe and the kid, you know, he would like to see. His preference would be to see, see four. Individual pickleball courts and then a full-size tennis court that we could utilize, um. Also with two pickleball courts. So, you know, I said, that's probably gonna be a little bit more than what we had budgeted. So he'd asked us to look at a price, you know, planning price for that. Um, and then also planning price if we just did six pickleball courts. Um, so basically we did that and I think the. You know, Joe's preference, and Joe can talk to this, but then Joe's preference is the, the four individual pickleball courts. And then the one full-size tennis court. Um, and I think that estimate, you know, pulling up the lighting. Um, and electrical service costs to that and, and a minor other things. That comes in at around six hundred and eighty thousand, which the city currently has budgeted at six hundred thousand. Um, the second option with the four pickleball courts. Without the tennis court came in, I think around six hundred and ten thousand. And then over the weekend, Joe was like, well, can you throw together a quick estimate with just four pickleball courts? So that was something I submitted yesterday, um, and that came in at around five or ten thousand. So that's just a little bit of a breakdown of, of kind of the three different options we're looking at. Um, again, nothing significantly different than what was originally planned, but. There's some changes and, and, you know, just trying to get a little bit better idea on pricing on that. Um, Joe, do you have anything to add to that or did I?
Well, my. My opinion on it is option number one is the four pickleball courts and the, the new tennis court. The tennis court that we have out there now gets used a lot. The, the pickleball court is used constantly and. And it's just a tennis court that we've converted with a couple of, uh. Uh, removable nets out there. Pickleball is not gonna go away anytime soon. And so I think it, it, uh. Having dedicated courts really make a difference. The other thing about having the tennis court over with the pickleball courts is this. Our current tennis court has some issues with the surfacing. It's starting to break away on the edges and so forth, and it's probably gonna need. A, some upgrade to it eventually, um, and while we're putting this. And now would be the time for us to add that tennis court. If we tried to add that tennis court later. It would be obviously much more expensive, but be very difficult as well. The other thing is if we get to a point where we determine that the one tennis court is enough. The current tennis court that we have allows us a lot of options. It could allow us to resurface it and have that second tennis court. It would also allow us. To possibly remove the tennis court and expand the park. And expand that part without really any, uh, serious, I think, financial consideration to it. And so the sixty, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We have, uh, still money left over. If you remember last month. We had said, uh, the, uh, amphitheater, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in lost that we're budgeted for now. We'll take that out of lost and use some of that money to help cover. The bathrooms and the pavilion up at Heartland Heights. Well, there's still some money left over in that. And Cynthia, I don't remember exactly what it was, but I think it was like thirty thousand dollars. Is that correct? So somewhere in there. And then fifty thousand dollars out of our savings account, which we still have. Makes up that eighty thousand dollars. And it gives us a, a better, uh. I think a, a better venue, number one, but it also allows us some additional informa- or additional options in the future as we go.
And it hasn't been bid yet.
And it hasn't been bid yet. We don't know if six, eight, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars is the number. It may come in at six hundred thousand dollars right where we were at to start with. But to Shane's point, the scope of the project originally was two tennis courts, and that's where the six hundred thousand dollars was. So with taking out the lighting, taking out the benches, taking out the trash cans, taking out. Some of that peripheral stuff that we can do on our own. We have, already have budgeted money for. I think this is the route for us to go.
I've been taking out the light and it's a good idea because who's playing pickleball at ten o'clock at night? Most people would play pickleball over Joe's age. But I will say, I went to play pickleball on Sunday. There was people playing tennis when I got there. When they were done, my boys and I played pickleball for about an hour. While we were still there, four women showed up to play pickleball. So it is a high usage.
Yeah.
For. I know it's anecdotal, that's one day, but a lot of people.
No, well, and, and the other thing is too, is that it, it draws people, um, into town. Um, so when you talk about places like Dollar General and Casey's and the Star Bar and in those places. Um, you know, it's, it's economic development as well. Um, just like any of our parks or any of our things that we do out there in the parks and rec department. Um, it, it gives our, our town, uh, an intrinsic value. Uh, this is why people want to live here, is for these reasons, so.
Are people still donating for the concrete benches?
Yes.
I was just thinking of ways to add benches.
Oh, yeah.
In there.
I, I don't know of a concrete bench, what I would put in there, but yes, people are still donating benches, yes.
So a question I have, uh. Would we, if we don't do the lights, would we still want to do the underground electrical so that their lights could be added at a later date?
Is, is that in the six hundred and eighty thousand?
Yeah, that's all included. Included in that, that number on the right. Um, it was just the lights that would be done separately. It could be added later. I have to do electrical service extension to service that, that could also be done later with the lights. And obviously, if you don't do the site electrical, you probably come back and do it later, but. It'd be easier to do it on the. Grass, right? Yeah, for the most part, it's, it's, it's in the grass.
So we could cut that down a little bit more if we did run away from the blocks. How much was that change? We had that on that separate column.
I think the site electrical is thirty to forty thousand.
Yeah.
So that scenario. Joey had said thirty from the other project, but over.
Yeah.
So if it's thirty as the number. Then it's only twenty on the.
Yeah.
That work.
Right. And again, we don't have a bid yet either.
Right.
Um, so it, it could come in, it could still come in at six hundred thousand. See, I think you've got some contingency built in there, some pretty good contingency.
Service side, but. It doesn't mean it always is, but.
It's eighteen percent contingency model, eight months.
On the planning side, yeah. You, before you get into designing, you know, you obviously don't have everything in there. You also have to consider, you know, consideration, you know, yearly some change or during construction with that.
I'd probably lean towards the tennis court or pickleball. Or it's, and cut out ground electrical up there, save a little bit more.
That will also.
You, you know, that, one thing I will say is the rest of that area to the west is gonna be developed. Eventually. And we're gonna need electric up there no matter what. So, I don't know, is now the right time to, to run electrical up there or not?
I think the electrical is specific to the courts on this. Cause I think when we did that electrical upgrades and lighting upgrades a couple of years ago. There was handholds and some electricals stubbed out or that. So this would be specific for the courts. It is, it's up to future lights. And then you just have to install the lights.
Joe, in your, in your notes, you said you don't know if it makes sense to run. If you like it right now, so that. I think much what you're saying, I think, what I'll say is. No electrical this. When I even know if it would be something that makes sense in. Years down the road, year. Maybe for, but I know, I just don't see people playing pickleball at E P M.
Well, in this time of year, it's, it's still light out at eight forty-five. You can still play on those courts at eight forty-five. You only have another hour before the park closes anyway. As we get look further into the year and the, the sun goes down sooner, when that sun goes down, it gets cold. So it's, it's not like the sun goes down and it's still seventy-five degrees outside. When that sun goes down in, in October, even though during the day was sunny and warm. At night, once that sun goes down, it gets cold.
And when do your leagues end?
Our leagues for pickleball right now end at the end of September.
I think it makes sense not to like electrical running anything even. Just to make sure that you're down the road to Dalton Bell, to what you said.
Yeah.
At at night. We're trying to save money here, so. Doesn't make sense to. Everything there, put it under cloud. Kind of goes in a different direction of what we're trying to do. We're trying to figure out a way to make it work.
Yeah.
We're extending life, like just the handles, right? We have the same circuits as the.
I think. Details, but yeah.
The handles are all there, so you can add it easily later on.
And the four pickleball courts makes sense instead of two tennis courts. If I I've done a little research on the the pickleball and, you know, there's there's professional leagues there. It it's a growing sport all over the place. In fact, there's talk that it'll become an Olympic sport within the next two Olympics. Uh, once that happens, I can see this becoming uh more of a high school sport too. I mean, it's it's gonna filter down.
Well, is it speed walking in the Olympics? So that's not really saying.
Shane. Was there, there gonna be a new surface to run up there?
Then alignment after it extended service, but that won't have to be done until lights were added.
Yeah, so that would be.
Yeah, that was that was the additional cost type of later.
Well, you gotta put a new service in just for the pickleball court?
Pretty much anything, anything that needs additional electrical, either the course or any development, if the parking lot extends to the west, we have. An additional service to service the complex area. And I know we talked about that, we did the the extension a couple of years ago. And we were able to work it out with what we did without having to do that.
LED and everything else that does five, but I think we're pretty. So as far as usage is concerned, do you have any like? What what the usage is of the current?
Well, we're not down there all the time, but I will tell you this, for the league that we have. Uh, first year that we had the league, which was three years ago, we had. I think we had sixteen teams. Two years later, we've got thirty teams that are out there. We went from one night a week to three nights a week. Uh, it's big enough that we also rely on Walford's pickleball court, which. Is not ideal. And uh our players would prefer to play on a better surfaced area. Um, but it's also one of those things, Dan, where I think it's, it truly is, if you. If you build it, they'll come, they'll come out there and play. Uh, we have, we have people across the street all the time. We take reservations for the pickleball court now. So we we have weekly reservations out there. Um, we play approximately thirty games a week right now during league. And uh that runs from the beginning of May until the end of July, then we have another six-week uh league. That starts the end of August and goes through the end of September to the beginning of October.
Yeah, I'm not not denying that there's. To the end, um, I play tennis.
It is what? Sorry.
So you have to reach under the fence.
But uh, I guess as far as. You know, this this is a lot. Lot of money. And. Four versus two. I guess as far as demand, I'd be curious to know. Like, demand within Fairfax versus demand on. Cedar Rapids or whatever Walford called them. That's, I mean, it's great, they they refuse it, but you know.
Sure.
Justin, every day, they're coming to use it in courts, but.
And that's that's a fair comment. What I will tell you, though, is when people come in to our parks. And they spend some time in our parks, one of the things that uh. Could change their mind about where they buy their next house, whether it's in Fairfax or whether it's in Cedar Rapids or whether it's in Walford. Is because of the amenities that we have. And I think that's that's real. Now, can I tell you exactly how many pickleball? Games are played outside of our league? I can't, like I said, I'm I'm not there. Um, but I think two pickleball courts cuts us short. If we're gonna put this in now, and we all understand what it costs to put something in on the second phase. Uh, four pickleball courts is where we need to be at for the future. And I think we we use them right away. It won't make any difference. You know, we've got two softball diamonds, baseball diamonds as a complex. That nobody ever thought we were gonna do anything other with them than Fairfax written sports. Which was Little League and Pony League Baseball and Softball. Nobody thought we'd ever do anything like that. Since April, we've had hosted three hundred and fifty games on our fields. Now, not all of those are from Fairfax. Some of those are from Cedar Rapids. Some of those are from. The Quad Cities, some of those are from Minnesota, but when they come to Fairfax, they spend money.
Any other questions for Joe or Shane?
I'm planning on building a bathroom by our.
So from a, sorry, one more question, apologies. So from a, I saw your write-up. What would that look like? For having the the court relatively all women, because there's people playing tournaments versus a casual person. Showing up, like, is it eighty, twenty?
No, I, in in my mind right now, I I do not see us locking the gates for the pickleball. The only, we have four diamonds in Fairfax. Two of our diamonds are public diamonds, and anybody can play on them at any time without any reservation or anything else. Two of them are locked up, and those are the ones at the complex. I don't anticipate us to lock these up. Anybody can play on them at any time. But when we have tournaments during the weekend on the baseball fields, you can't walk out on the baseball fields and play because they're already in use. If we had tournaments on the pickleball courts, be the same way. You wouldn't just be able to come out and play a game on a pickleball court if there's a tournament going on.
Right, what I guess what a better way of asking is. In in your mind, is there a plan to have a tournament or or an event, whatever you wanna call it, games going on? I like I like baseball diamonds every single night, so. An everyday resident, if they're not in a tournament. Confidence level, health-wise, who knows, but they still wanna go play. Are they gonna be locked out pretty much? Majority of the time that there's tournaments.
I I don't think so. I don't think so. And those three hundred and forty games that I'm talking about were over thirteen weeks. The rest of the time, we don't have that type of of uh. Of games going on. So, no, I don't think so. I don't think that if you came down three times in a week. That every time you came down, you wouldn't be able to get on the court because there's a tournament going on. I don't believe that to be the case.
Well, you also still have the two.
Uh, what's that?
Would you be using both facilities for the tournaments?
I I don't believe so.
City Park and then.
That I don't believe so. This, the the dedicated courts is, if we were gonna hold a tournament. That's where we would hold it, and that's not a week weekly deal. I think that's probably even more of a. Monthly deal, every six weeks. I don't know what that looks like yet, Dan, because I I don't have that. Uh, that I don't have that facility. To be able to say that's what we're gonna do with.
You understand my concern, that's.
I I understand your concern. It's a lot of money if the Fairfax people can't get on the courts because we're running tournaments all the time. I absolutely understand what you're saying. I don't believe that to be the case.
You don't believe it to be the case, or you don't think it's the case?
I don't believe it to be the case. That's my statement. I don't believe that to be the case.
Any other questions? Counsel for Joe or Shane? Joe, so your preference is?
My preference is that. Uh, that layout right there. In the uh alternate. Pricing, taking out the lights, taking out the electric, uh. Taking out the other peripheral stuff, which actually adds up to a lot, which are benches. And garbage cans and that sort of thing in there, uh probably some shade in there as well. That we'll be able to do that on our own through other budget items or other budget lines that we have. But that's, that's my preference.
That's for pickleball courts, not tennis court.
Yep, and it sounds like, you know, if you take the the electrical out of it too. We're down closer to six thirty or six forty.
That's my hope. Sorry, conscious before some seconds. You say when you take out the electrical at six forty.
I I can't see it, so I don't know what it'll have in front of me.
The the service, the lights and the underground.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, that's just the last thing.
Right, but just electrical stuff.
It would also would also adjust the engineering services agreement because there's a section of that with a lot of engineering, so that would be removed too.
Do I have motion on the floor?
Second.
All in favor?
I, I, I. I.
Move on to item number eighteen, consider resolution to enter into an interneering service. All all I'm seeing now are gonna be by that.
Yeah, so so basically, the only thing that we modified is we pull out the uh. The portion as electrical engineering, which I think was eighteen thousand. If you don't get. You agree that, so that. Also, I'd like to go off things there.
So do you need to present a revised agreement at the next meeting?
I guess my my recommendation would be approve it with that. I'd remove it and then have it shoot it over that um that change be executed. Um, maybe not comfortable with that.
By motioning would be um. Electrical design, yeah. Design, so.
So the resolution, someone need a roll call, Tom?
I, 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 I.
Thank you. Number nine, discussion of possible loss and considering the temporary tenure. To QTS layout area. Chris has some thoughts.
Uh, so the QTS layout area that has begun movement or getting their site ready. Um, filed out. That they're finding a temporary residential well to service their restrooms. Um, and other water needs up there. Um, I would like to. Well, I've already been gonna talk to her, but I'd like counsel to consider running a temporary water, six-inch water service line up there. Supply it with first and foremost, the fire hydrant. So fire breakout, we're gonna have. Thirty-three hundred to thirty-five hundred people working there twenty-four seven, round the clock. Uh, we really like to see some. Some water outside in case we fire emergency. The second. Uh, benefit to the city of Fairfax in this regard would be without have that temporary well. Punched in the ground, later sealed, which is going to end up on an industrial site. Uh, the contamination. Issues there would be. The third, we sell the water. Uh, QTS can talk to it. They, as you know, are running on a huge uh ahead of everyone else's schedule. So when I began talking with them. I told them I would put this on your agenda. If you're interested, we will continue talking to them. This would not be to suit their standards. Uh, we will not be putting in hydrants every four hundred V. We're not putting in. Extra valves to isolate any areas of it. From the end of the water main over at. Regen, a section sign, we put a valve out there, so there's no backlog. We would send six inch out to them to hydrant first. Why? Maybe they'll get two hydrants to each end. We haven't figured all the details out yet. I don't wanna go too far into it. Do you guys aware what's going on and give it its blessing or not? So if they got a water service out there, are they? What kind of batteries they put out there that are ten forty? The way I found out about it is they're setting a subject tank to pump. So it's gonna be significant. That's all I found out about it, Pitt County. Um, again, kind of scrambled. Uh, I'm not about temporary well. Then that's where we are, really, with this thing. It's transpired in the last week, I can tell you that. They're not using four cows there. No, I know. Your residential, you don't, let's go say they were.
And this is all their cost, right?
Yes, this would be all on their cost. Put in to remove, we're selling water. We're getting the fire department water out there if there is diversity, when there is diversity.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I know a breaker, give me a downside. I just need your permission with the pursuant, and you know, to use this of terrorization on holding. I say yes, I don't.
So the motion is that Chris continue pursuing this with them, they.
Uh, there was an email in there from Iowa Land. They'd have to sign off on it. Um, it doesn't through an email out, saying they don't see any problem with it. Motion to tell them, say.
All in favor? Continue. Item number ten, I think Chris, we need you up there again. Um, discussion about motion to prove industrial builders permit that twenty twenty eleven, which is.
Yeah, Traver uh put in a follow-up system for the train loading and loading, uh. Thought it permit, he was made aware of it ever since she was made aware of it, she just came in. Uh, take care of everything she needed to. It is still industrial permit. You guys should still approve it. It's done, it's been inspected, but. Can I get official?
Motion.
All in favor, please?
I, I.
First again, we have a public hearing regarding amending the city Fairfax zoning code. In like industrial districts. But I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and then Chris can describe. What this entails prior to your discussion. So the hearing's open, go on.
Uh, so you're aware that. Traver was loading and moving railcars outside. Um, they weren't aware it was in our zoning. I asked D and her team come to the P and Z and present. Uh, what they're doing, their safety measures and whatnot, and I asked if you hear it tonight, see their hair. Because I can answer these questions that you might have a lot better than me. Uh, P and Z was satisfied with what they had to say. Regulated these changes to council. Uh, you will know this is not hazardous. And we, D and I have talked about this, if they were to ever go to a hazardous material, floating, unloading, they would have to rezone. That would not be allowed in our life, none of you. So I'm gonna give D the floor if you guys got questions or.
Go ahead and introduce yourself, please, and tell us your role with Traver.
I'm Dee Brown. I'm the Director of Operations at Traver. Um, and. We are doing a lot of transloading out at the site when we built, when we uh put the plan together to build L P C R, or at least Farcey Rapids. Half of it was designed on the warehouse, the other half of the rest was coming from. Translating, um, so we did not realize that the the old fence was in place, um, that you couldn't transload outside, but obviously. We built three tracks out there for a reason, um, and we've been translating for a while and this came to our attention, so. Apologize if we didn't do this in advance. I thought it had been done, um, so. I can answer any questions you might have.
What's the material you're transferring?
It it varies, so we have customers that approach us um about doing translating. Right now, we've done things like, uh, we've done shingles, we've done sheetrock, we've done fly ash, we've done um. Starch, we got a lot of starch for ingredients. We've done fly ash, we've done um starch, we've got a lot of starch for ingredient. Um. Uh, soybean meal, I think was the other thing with soybean and corn. Or primarily agri-related products.
So it could vary also just depends upon what the need is at that time.
Yeah, so, um, so we have a process in place. So a customer comes to us, or we have a business development group. And customers contact them to say, hey, we'd like to do transloading. She gets all the information, how many cars they're gonna have on a regular basis. Um, he'll try to find they're gonna haul it. In some cases, um, Traver Logistics is hauling, in other cases, the. Company that brings the transloading in, um, sets up the trucks. Um, we have a process that we go through that Allison in our environmental group. Is a very long laundry list, um, of things we go through to know what we're unloading and loading. So that we can put whatever we need to impose, um, in case there's something goes wrong. Um, like a spill or something like that. We just recently added some asphalt along the tracks. So that if you do um, spill some corn or some starch, it was easy to, to pick up and, and clean up versus the gravel area. So they have to go through this list of. Um, environmental things. Um, before we approve. That we're gonna do the translating before we even give customers pricing or anything like that. So. Environmental is important to us. Um, and we are part of utility. We are all biolyne energy. There's nothing more important than environmental, protecting the water and the air and then the ground that we operate on. It might be long-term part of their long-term. Um, residents of this community, so we do the right thing.
Any other questions for Dee? Cynthia, did we receive any public comments in advance of the hearing?
Not that I were.
Anyone in the audience have any? Comments or questions?
I just have one question. Oh, this on the corner. Are kind of uh, what I learned was a lot of their backs, the fly ash. How are they transporting that? Because that's pretty dangerous, um. They were taking all the, so I was just wondering how they transported that.
Someone from Traver.
Hello. Um, I'm in Reddick, not advised. I am the warehouse manager at L P C R. Uh, so the fly ash comes in um, via truck. And uh. We have a containment system on top of it while we're uh, translating. So it's, we call it a dust collector. So it's collecting the dust so that it gets spread out. Um, it's just that all this mitigating. Anything like that. So it's.
It's always contained.
Correct. Correct. It has a, the truck has a new management system, hose, puts up the trailer, I mean, sorry, to the railcar. And um. It pumps it out. I was pumping it out. It's the dust collector is doing his job by collecting the dust. And then it would be emptied out. It purges itself back into the railcar. So it's never ever outside of park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? During that, I'm going, um, also do. Okay with everything? I'm gonna close the public hearing. And we'll move on to item number twelve. Which is to consider ordinance one twenty. Um. Adding some special exceptions. Chris, you want to maybe talk about that just a little bit? The law.
We added, within the definitions, we added the definition of translating, because that was a big word to me when. Traver and Dee and her team came into the P and Z, none of us had heard of that before. Uh, and then they ask, one oh seven C three is special exceptions. Uh, that is. Allowed through Board of Adjustment Hearing. Which will be their next step to go through. Uh. So this isn't open to any business within our industrial. They would have to come in and get a special exception to the Board of Adjustment. Which the Board of Adjustment can put initial thought.
Those just changing the orders to allow for us a Board of Adjustment?
This. Requires the Board of Adjustment here for them getting one to transload on this like industrial district. That make sense?
Any questions on ordinance? During that, I'll consider a motion to introduce and approve the first reading of ordinance one twenty.
Motion. Sorry.
Uh, roll call, please.
I, I, I.
Next, consider a motion to suspend the rules requiring that it be voted on to additional counties.
Motion. Sorry.
Roll call, please, Tom.
I, 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 I.
And finally, consider a motion for final passage and adoption.
Motion.
Roll call, please.
I, 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 I.
Okay, thank you. So the next step is requesting more of adjustment, Chris?
Yeah, that I'll take care of that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number thirteen. Uh, this Cynthia.
This was mine.
Yes, right. So we did the city administrator code.
You know, I had spent several cities, they're all chapter twenty-one. So I wrote in this chapter twenty-one. Didn't even notice till another clerk, they're getting ready to go through this process and looked at our code and it said. Your chapter twenty-one to library board, I said. So. This is not changing any of the wording, but just changing chapter twenty-one numbering to chapter twenty-three numbering.
Motion.
A roll call, please, Tom.
I, I, I. Motion to suspend certain. We're to fly this.
Roll call, please.
I, I, I.
Thank you.
Motion private.
Roll call, please, Tom.
I, I, I.
Thank you. Moving on to item number fourteen, discussion of possible motion to fire department budget balance.
So. Just. Change second. But point five.
Are you factoring once at the end of this, or?
So. Here's the skinny. That's how much money you have left in this year's budget. The reason we have that much money left in this year's budget is I told you a couple of other times, we're writing grants. To try to replace our bunker gear. Which is outdated. Have to do it every ten years. So the reason there's that much money left is because I haven't purchased any bunker gear unless I absolutely have to. Because we're waiting for the grant to come out from federal government. We all know that that's kind of rule slow. So if they tell us. In the next month or two that we don't. Qualify for the grant. Part of that money in the budget that we have now and the money that we've had donated from a few businesses, it's gonna go to pay for our bunker here. So we can move that money into savings. And if we don't get the uh. Grant for the bunker gear, then we'll just shoot that money towards doing the upgrades to the. Fire station addition when that project gets going, if it ever gets. And I just can't, you're okay.
And this little calculation, that's those are total budgets, the amount they spent, uh, the. They took out the savings not spent because that money is still sitting in our savings. So a net amount sixty-three, four fifty-eight. And remember that some of that money is. Um, directed from Fairfax, but some from law, for some from the township and Fairfax Townships.
That's kind of everybody's piece of mind.
So what would you like? The council to approve you doing?
Just they're trying to move that into savings for. Future purchases of. Bunker deer or. Building. Any lawful use. Motion.
All in favor?
I, I, I.
Thank you. Move on to number fifteen, discussion of possible motion concerning fire station.
So this is the step I meant, I'm not that familiar with this part of the process because I've never done this, but. We did receive an estimate. On what the building might cost. When we got the plans from the Arden. So you should have that number in your packet. So I did talk to. Lucas today from E I B in case they would win the bid. Uh, that they are bonded, Shane. The new company that bought them. He got ahold of them. They've. Under new ownership over the last six days or six weeks or. I'm sure. Anyway, so my question to you is, do you, how do we want to progress with? The bidding? Do we want to do a sealed bid? Do we want to do uh? What's the other?
Either competitive.
Competitive.
Or at a quote.
Yeah.
Thresholds two hundred and six thousand. Which requires a competitive bid, you're at or above that.
So this, what was?
So you, you said Lucas indicated that that number is a pretty firm number with bonding and everything.
Yeah, that's what he said.
So it's close, but, but based on that number, the city could get at a close and not worth it, at a bid prices. Now, kind of did the same thing with Parks Project.
Right.
Yeah.
The one thing that I did notice on this would be they had an estimate for. Hauling away. Cleaning the site. And that was like an estimate of like twenty thousand or something like that. That is something that. The city has dump trucks and a skid boat, or so all that stuff could be cleaned and hauled away by city and not by. A private contractor. Just to keep the, just to keep the. Price down. So which is the option? Well, or competitive bid to keep it under two. So right now with the estimate that we have, we can do a competitive. Bid. We don't have to do a slump, a quote, we don't have to do a bid.
So competitive, competitive quote, you'd send it out to at least two, I think, but typically the city does at least three. With the Parks Project, I think we sent out to four different contractors. They'd probably be the same contractors. Um. And uh, obviously you can send them out as many as you want, but you just send directly to the contractor, a public bid, put it out, and it goes out everywhere. You can still notify contractors individually, but then it goes out of network. Contractors can see it from the point area, the Quad Cities, where they're interested, they can submit a bid. Which if you're doing a quote, they'll find or find out. So you just maybe it's a little more interesting to do the bids. Uh, it costs a little bit more money, she has to go through, you know, you have to have. You know, public hearing, you have to go through the bidding process. It will take a little more time. Try to get more eyes on it, so. There's obviously advantages each way. Kind of on that threshold, so. I think that's why speaking on stuff. Bring it to the council, especially with recent experience we've had.
Ten one ninety-six include the twenty and. All and stuff away.
Yes.
And so it'd be actually closer to one seventy-five. Yeah, they should say it on that quote. He had it itemized. Of things itemized on it.
Can you?
So I probably do competitive.
That, what your motion meant.
Yes, that was. Second.
All in favor?
Um, I, I. So my question on that. Thank you. Who sends out the competitive quote? Does Chris do that, being a building thing? Does Shane do that? Does Murda do that?
I would recommend, um. Having Rob back, the architect involved with it. Yeah, just have him prepare, give him specific, you know, items that the city would handle. And he can just send it out directly to the. You know, the contractors, if you've got a few contractors, you want to make their school. That would be my recommendation. Then if there's any questions, since it's, you know, all architectural, we go through and get it out. I mean, you want to keep it in-house if Brian or. Chris are comfortable building, you can do that. But.
They'd have to work with the architect and.
Yeah, those questions are gonna have to reach back to Rob, so I don't, we don't need to be involved with it. But I'd say either in-house or, or with Rob to do it.
Okay. Sounds good.
Question, did they vote on that motion?
Yes.
Yes.
They did?
Yeah.
Removed and who settled it?
Oh, I got that, okay.
Yeah, I did.
I hear.
Okay. Moving on to item number sixteen. Which is our Vanderbilt Street. Union Pacific Railroad crossing, the update. Where are we standing at? They discussed. They have accepted our funding application. Um, their word to me is they want to present that by requested expedite. Process. Uh, they're gonna present that this fall, but before it goes. In another inch further, they want the council. To indicate that you're willing to uh. Pay for our percentage, our, to the project. Which you, if you see the email from Christopher Clark and then you know, the. The ninety-four eight seventy would be our twenty percent. So Cynthia has thoughts to come back with that. Possibly. We need to move some things around here or.
What did we talk about? We talked about that. I didn't think about to bring that up, um. Yeah, we will. We'll find the money. So I, I was looking at uh, some bond purposes and uh. Yeah, there, there's money available to do it. Um, probably all in bond money that um, people already have on hand. And if not, uh, we've got general fund money or road use money. You've got the most in your road use money that I've ever seen for a site for that, so. Any of those funding sources that there would be, that might be fine then.
So what they're needing from us, this motion. Turned. To approve. That we're committed to that funding and then I'll share that with them and then I'll keep it going.
That works. Works. For the twenty percent of us, right, and then you forty, so.
The ninety-four eight seventy. Our twenty percent, and you moved.
Yeah. Thank you.
All in favor?
I, I, I.
Okay. Thank you. I will contact them tomorrow and. Keep this going, maybe stem certified, hopefully speed up. Okay, we've already covered seventeen and eighteen. So that takes us down to number nineteen, resolution to approve a pay application number one for well number four, Shane.
That's this is the first pay application for well number four, they got the observation well in, most of the second work done. Um, sounds like. Try to get out, start well number four drilling next week. Um, but looked at the A app and saw online.
Any questions for Shane?
Just a little bit of info, uh. We had said when we started construction, that's when we're gonna start drawing a Lincoln grant, uh. So we'll start. Using that those. Funds that will be reimbursed.
Was that? Or not, was that grand?
Or you twenty-five or?
Four.
That came from their ARPA?
Yes.
Motion. Sorry.
Need a roll call, please, Ben?
I. I, I.
Okay. Number twenty, resolution to pay application number two from the municipal site tool for sanitary sewer rehab.
Yeah, so this is the second pay application for the. Sewer lining, the rehab project. Um, it's not finalized or the final one, hopefully it'll be next month. I think it, it covered pretty much everything except for the retainer. Uh. They've got uh. They had some, some of their videos that we've required, I'm just, once work was completed. A couple of the uh, service connections, the video didn't turn out, so they gotta get there to get it re-videol or get it cleaned up and be sent to the city. They said they give that to us for a month pay application, like you said, hold next month. This should cover the majority of what's left to be paid for that work.
Motion. Thank you.
Roll call, please, Tom.
I, I, I.
Thank you. Item number twenty-one, get a resolution to approve a. Item number twenty-one, get a resolution to approve an I D O T application and agreement for use of highway right away. Is this yours first?
Yeah, I don't remember, we're getting a ton of these for the. Yeah, we're getting a ton of these for the West Tim, West Cemetery Bridge realignment project, they're moving all that. Yeah, all the utilities have to move for the bridge realignment. We also have another one, that might be this one, that's coming down, eighty street, Highway thirty.
Well, this one's.
I think we've had eight of these in the last two weeks because of the bridge realignment. Not all over, Iowa D O P, some of ours just didn't sit here.
Well, this one's specific to urban cable construction.
Motion.
Roll call please. Thank you, number twenty-two, discussion of truck routes through Fairfax. So we've been receiving a lot of complaints about trucks using. Um, and it's not, doesn't seem to be related to the QTS site. But the problem is, or the challenge is, we don't have any signage indicating they can't do that, we haven't designated that officially as a home truck. Lynn, you wanna talk a little bit about your thoughts or what, make it happen or Chris more?
Even if the signs are gonna, you're still gonna get the drivers going wherever they want, they always have since I've been here. Um, we initially had some signs on Church Street by the highway and then again by Vanderbilt Street and a couple of. The sign said you could bring a truck to Vanderbilt Street businesses, which is a lot, but beyond that, wasn't allowed. We never had that officially in the books, it was asked to be put up from previous people. So we put it up and then we took it down and. Looked over for tax because they were going that way, which we, they, not the same hazard, but. So the town's just not able to pick trucks. You still have to have truck people come in for the businesses, get their sometimes. So it's a no win situation in the elevator, they got the trucks. They gotta come in, find out.
Chris got some thoughts?
Yeah, it's really, uh, council looking forward with what's going on out there with the data centers, uh. The, uh, Traverell site, regen, all that, we should probably really order and mount you. Improving that road in our long term. C I P stuff.
There's been communication with Joanne and I in county about taking that off the part of market. Of route, to be able to change that too, but we haven't heard anything back, or at least I haven't.
Yeah, that's my question, how many of these roads are far to market, how easy is it to get those roads taken on?
It's just South View, that's.
Listen, what about Church Street, is that a part of the market road?
There's that art speed bump, where it's tailing. You put two or three more. Are you talking about? Yeah. We put a couple more, not before the south side, on the west side, but. You get a couple more, you're, you're a truck driver, right, you gotta slow down, you can't hit that hard.
I don't know, is anyone, is speed an issue, I don't know that speed's an issue, just the fact, no, right?
I mean, you're thinking what you're making an inconvenience for a partner, I'm sure, right? Plus it's beating.
But that's not the problem, the, the G I S mapping will send them that way. They have no idea where they're driving there. Lot of map, we don't have the ability to update whatever they're looking at in their truck, telling them.
You gone down that street?
No, I have never been down that street, they heard once. Yeah, they're getting trailers out of Bushman's, he's got a trailer running place, occasionally some come out of Traverell. Traverell did ask us if we can identify the trucking company, uh, with a picture, they would be more than happy to. Confront that trucking company, but we don't always know where they're coming from, I know during USA days, I think it was seven or eight trucks in a row. Went into Bushman, so I leave, Joanne, you told me.
Well, during some ball games that.
Point there, the, one of the residents right on the corner, they're seeing them one after another, and I'm sure they're following that. App in their truck that says turn left in four hundred feet, you know, at Church Street.
Yeah, they're, they're.
We have no way to address that through the A I or whatever it is, you know, the apps.
They're using their Google apps instead of where their dispatcher tells them. So they, they don't get that dispatch or they don't look at it, so they're.
I think really the solution is South View needs to be upgraded, that becomes your truck route, then we can go back to no truck route on Church. Looking like we're getting close to fixing the river tracks up there on Vanderbilt, you know, so there's a, a lot of pieces coming together on this, but really probably South View. Maybe looking at moving that up on the C I P.
Would we be capable of, I know it's not forcible, but putting a sign on one fifty-one that says Church, not a truck route, use. South View.
Once it's in group, I think we could, yeah, it would take some deal with the team maybe, but yeah.
And a lot of things there, right, I've seen they make the turn to the left, but.
Yeah, that's why I suggested one fifty-one, if you put it on Church, by the time they turn on, will they get it put it for her?
Realistically.
Still doing that.
Realistically, I don't know how many of you guys have those apps in your vehicles, you're not looking at the sun, you're looking at. Yeah, we talked about it, so we're blue in the face, but I think the people are, we have a plan for that, Dan, but it's, it's coming together.
What are we doing in the meantime, we have one primary in Thunder, here's that we have no way to force anything since we.
And every call and it said, if you pull out, you tell the truck people going into your lot to not use. Church Street.
Yeah, but they, the ones that do come in on the, some of them do go around them square, then the others still go over the track and get their shoes. Like the.
Going around that curb at the end of Church and then going on to Fairfax Road is not easy for a truck.
A good truck driver to make it, but.
But none of, none of the bad ones, Dan.
Out of the thirteen tire trucks, three of them went over the tracks, all the other, what did I say, thirteen, so ten. Missed it by that far, going over the tracks, going back out, I watched every. And we won't take our dump truck, our new dump truck, we can't take over the tracks.
So any ads, thoughts for athletes, it's just a discussion only topic, is there a solution? Other than Chris talking to.
I have any bar.
Our, our J break sign works really well. The worst sign, yeah, I don't know, uh, getting it far to market, getting that moved and short of endorsing and penalizing someone, I don't think.
There's no way to penalize them.
Ask B O T to sit out there and bust them.
You gotta catch them, and everything else.
Well, we have some residents that can provide photo evidence, but we have no ordinance to enforce at the moment.
It's a no win.
And it sounds like limited to them.
Bringing that to your attention. All right, moving on to item number twenty-three. Uh, you have some information in your packet.
Some spurges.
Um, after our last, uh, council meeting, I received some concerns expressed from staff. Um, regarding, uh, council meetings, uh. And asked that I look into if, what would happen if we're gonna share stuff in here, um, at every meeting. Some cities do that already. Unfortunately, it would not be covered under our normal patrol hours, we would have, uh. Hire someone that, uh, that's off duty and we've got the information in the packet, so sharing that information. With you, if you have any interest, pursuing that, and questions that can be here. On request, on a specific meeting, if you feel like there might be some challenges. With any discussions on a specific meeting, we're gonna have them here every meeting. Uh, it's a three hour minimum, as you see, and you can see when the hourly rate is in there, and we do have to give them some. At least forty-eight hours notice, or we hire a rate against fifteen. So. Just wanted to provide that information, see if you had, if this, Joy, anything, does that, I don't know what we're doing.
Why not try? You're not even doing a contract, we're gonna do it every time, we give you the option to have it out there.
Are you suggesting that our next council meeting that we have?
Yeah, try it for the next, council meeting, we'll see how it goes, yeah, so it's three hours minimum.
Three hours now, huh?
That's seventy-six dollars now.
So, so we have a three hour, one hour meeting, we're paying three, yeah.
Joanne, I don't know, we had a one hour meeting, four, but maybe not, I'm talking regular council meeting, is what I'm talking about.
So basically you're looking to spend about, that'd be twenty-seven hundred dollars a year. So that's twelve meetings, a non-counter specials, then two, what, what did I say, two eighteen? Two twenty-eight a meeting, twelve meetings, that's what, twenty-two eighty plus another. Four fifty-six or whatever that math is.
If we had a four hour meeting, it would be more.
Yeah, I don't know, if there's concern about staff safety, I know, um, there's always a few crazies out there that like to. Run their mouth online, I thought it was great for two, but.
Grab a resident, come in.
Yes, Barbara Connor, one-on-one Williams Boulevard, in fact, um, I'm a hundred percent. Behind having a deputy sheriff here at every meeting and a city attorney. You know, if you all can spend, um, you know, six hundred thousand dollars for a pickable. Or maybe we ought to have a deputy sheriff here and somebody that understands the law. You know, just my opinion, but I'm absolutely a thousand percent behind having a deputy here at every single meeting, thank you.
Great, uh, thanks Barbara. So, uh, we need a motion to take any action. It took action without a.
Do you wanna do a case by case basis, or do you wanna do it, or? Damn, you're strong, but you wanna do that.
I think just with what you see nationally, we call that, that probably is best to have someone here.
Maybe that lady from one fifty West Cemetery.
Another thing, I guess, a lot of times we're talking about enforcement of some of these ordinances and whatnot, you got the deputy right there to weigh in. There's a positive there.
We don't have to commit to every meeting, we could do a one meeting or do it each time we sign, probably we would like.
We can get through twenty-five, for just the regular meetings and see how it goes and then.
We have to fill out this form and in advance and.
So you fill this form, uh, at least forty-eight hours before it, so you don't wanna have an extra surcharge. So if not committed towards every single meeting.
So it says it's extra duty, are they still uniform?
That'd be kind of like USA days when they hire someone at the street dance or something.
So, the patrol car is that on top of it, twenty dollars per hour? Cause I'm sure they have a rental car here, or that's included, right?
My question would be to them, or just to the ride, would be if it is a deputy or if it is a special deputy. Reserve, a reserve, that would be my question. You tell them that you want a deputy every time, not a reserve deputy. If you might get somebody that's been a reserve deputy for three months, that's not gonna, no, might not be as easy, quick on the trigger. And you're just saying, you want somebody that knows more rules, I would get, uh, full pledge deputy, not a reserve deputy.
None much sure, but I don't think they serve the cars, I think they're very good persons.
That's on the form, if we want them to drive their car here, we have to indicate that.
Or they'll be in uniform on their own car?
Correct.
We might be north, so if you were looking for a special patrol or something, so you'd have to pay for them in the car if you wanted something on that. Otherwise, if something did go on here, that they can get somebody else to transport somebody.
Right.
I don't know if we get to specify that when we'd want a regular versus reserve, that wasn't brought up at all.
I would specify that, that is my, that is my recommendation to the council.
Ask, if we can specify that.
You do not want a special deputy. Cause all that is, is somebody sitting here in their uniform.
Maybe they'll give you a deal or they don't have to come do the report, but special.
Almost, yeah, and what Spanky said about. Uh, special reserve if deputy. And I mean, we, we go as.
Needed.
As needed, right?
Can we say, yes, we're pretty hot out, like some of those, like the Jim and Wade had twenty-nine meetings.
Well, most of the special.
Where it's just like, you know, proving the budget.
But just for.
There's some special meetings that the best.
I could still have that, you know, where, I mean, just where it's. Regular council meetings, I mean, there's the weather, Phil, who's here and there.
Do you want us to request it one meeting at a time or for the whole rest of the year or?
I'd say one meeting at a time, cause there always can get someone that comes in here and tries to act tough and, you know, make a big statement. That's fine, that doesn't bother me, I mean, but if people wanna feel comfortable bringing in a sheriff. If you wanna do a case by case basis, that's fine.
How about, we have somebody for the August meeting and then you can provide additional feedback after that, so, or do you wanna continue? Okay. Did you have additional comments, Barbara? Before they make the motion here?
I don't.
All right, so I need a motion, please. Tom did, okay, one meeting at a time, regular, only not reserved. You second them?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Okay, number twenty-four, can we, uh, resolution for transfers?
Um, when we filed our budget, um, Lynn County called and said. We really should be paying our lease payments out of the debt service fund, uh, it's never been mentioned from an auditor. But I went ahead and, uh, we had time to, it didn't add any money, it just switched where it was coming from. Um, so we need to transfer the money from the funds that are, that have always paid the leases into the debt service. So I make payment out of debt service, that's all that's.
Need a motion?
Roll in play.
Roll call please, Tom. Thank you, number twenty-five, discussion of municipal motion concerning computer replacements needed, send the action.
So, uh, Joanne was having problems with her desktop at St. Paul, yeah, and Phil. And said that. Her computer really needs to be repaired, and why was he here, he looked around all of our computers. And then reviewed his information and, um, for the maintenance department, fire department, Kathy, did he talk to you?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, so. It's given us a list of the number of computers that need to be replaced because they can't be upgraded to the next Windows. Um, and my immediate response was, keepers, I wish you'd told me that at budget time. Um, you know, we've got lines in the, in the current budget to pay for computer upgrades. And the library board, it would decide, uh, for the library, but, um. And the library board, it was decided uh for the library, but um the. There, his estimate for the library is eight twenty, for the fire department is eight twenty, for the maintenance. Sorry, fire department is thirty nine thirty five, the maintenance department is eight twenty, and city hall is fifty three oh five, that's just equipment. Um and um then there would be, you know, set up um. Labor, I believe, we. Email talks about the. Yeah. So um. The support for the Windows ten ends, I believe, this fall sometime, so I would ask that you. At least for city hall, the maintenance and the fire department, Kathy, that's up to you.
Yeah, and the library, we'd like to opt out, we've got our own guy and he's there tonight, actually, so um.
So for city hall, the fire department and the maintenance to approve us giving this role in.
Yes, it's a question. Kathy, how much do you pay per hour for your?
Seventy five dollars.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's probably not bad, like computers, I look, yours are fine, decent price, but that. Uh. Set of fees. Almost something ridiculous, I.
Well, I can tell you that he's been our I T guy. Um since I start, just shortly after I started here, he has taken us from. One desktop computer in city hall and one at Burke's home. To, I can't even count how many, and uh we switched out servers, we have some stuff on the cloud now. Um. There isn't a. A growing pain or a situation that he hasn't been able to deal with, um. Is he the cheapest? Probably not, is he the most expensive? Probably not, but we do have a long relationship with him and he knows all of our equipment. And software, and he's worked, she works many times over the phone getting, uh and Laserfish, uh worked with Jacob um. To get all of our software coordinated along with the hardware. We kind of view it like engineering fees and attorney fees, that you've got a relationship with professional, um. But that's up to you guys.
And our guy came from the library world, so that's why we've got him. When he sold. The library work. He sold the.
The quiet place, so.
The chat house.
They get to know their X O T, sort of the software that you've got.
Oh, yeah, was this all in your, input in your I T budget line? The words.
Well, we've got I T money all throughout the budgets. And we certainly have enough right now to pay for all that. Are we gonna run short at the end of the year with our regular stuff that may be, we may talk then that a, a budget amendment is needed? Because like I said, I did not know this was.
Maybe you should watch it ten or something.
High emissions, that's right, I thought I did. In another, but maybe I just gave that to the department, that's, I mean, you know, as the statement on the budget items. They're total over everybody's budget, there was like, between office supplies, equipment, uh technology, I T work. It was like a quarter of a million dollars total. But we have other things to spend on it, you know, software, renewables and.
The insurance.
My, setting all desktop computers on live supporters and we speak, I've been bringing my laptop. Some days it will turn on, some days it won't, but we really don't wanna put any money, repair money into it if we're just gonna adapt through.
Well, like that one in the kitchen is. That, that we bought.
He's not here, but.
Right after I started. It um, that was first last shot we ever had, um I think we might have even bought that before we've got the second best. Up to, you know, uh some of them can be upgraded, they can all happily replace.
The fire departments are all used, you know, neither the heat.
The hands.
So you all, probably all one, they placed there.
All beat.
Oh, yeah. Free the rifle that are bringing all of them.
They're considering, the one that we did replace. Um having him give us an estimate if we were going to try to sell them. Rather than just throw them away, have them wait. What it would cost us, if anything, to, to wipe them off a bit, anybody could purchase them. In that current state. But I wouldn't, that probably not made for factor and.
Age, growth, you.
It's fine, especially for Windows ten hundred percent.
But that can't even, yeah.
Get around the thirty. They just stand on, people drop them out of the door, it's like washers and dryers. Big piece. Refrigerated.
I, I think we should push that and uh set up charge, and just imagine. Setting them up locally, doing all. What, eight, nine? Fourteen computers all at once. I think they can set them all up, all, all of those in less than two hours.
Well, I, I know that won't happen.
Yeah, you know, well, not.
I know the amount of coordination with all our different softwares and the amount of, just how long it takes to transfer the data. I know that it will not happen too. I've seen be on the phone for over an hour, it's just one of our softwares, you know, like Laserfish, try, you know, make sure. All the users and all the different licenses and the signing certificates and stuff, and then G works is.
I know it's not as a battle, but when we upgrade, I think five computers that are shot, I mean, one I T guy was there for five, two, three days. In a similar situation with the amount of different programs and software, you're setting it up and some may have grit. You know, C, so you know, C C C and collision link and all that garbage. And then you have issues of, does it not work, and troubleshoot, and it's a man there. I can't see that this all gone, so we would be here. Well.
Yeah, we know that. Finally, it has to be upgrades.
I don't do.
So what do you want to do, council? Let's proceed to learning to his plan. Or something else?
I would look forward, I know Dan's not thrilled with the setup.
That a motion?
That's a motion. So I didn't.
All in favor?
Aye, 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 aye.
So that was, well, okay. Thank you. And numbers twenty six, special possible motion, city administrator here, our application deadline was yesterday, so we're ready to take. The next step, Cynthia, you've got copies for the hiring committee, they've already got them in their spots. Uh Brian, Joe and I have mine, you have yours, thirty seven applications, certainly not all thirty seven have applicable. Um experience or skills, but there are some.
One of my friends.
So um. The next step is to, for the hiring committee to narrow it down to five, that then I talked about. Um. Then by Monday. Um need some clarification, Cynthia and I. Started bringing up what um the council decided at the last meeting about the hiring committee versus the council. Um interviewing process.
I, I thought it was, the committee was narrowing it down to say five, and then the council wanted to do all of the interviewing.
And I thought it was the hiring committee interviews the first five virtually, like for fifteen minutes. And then, and then recommends three to the full. Do you remember?
Maybe.
I didn't have a chance to go back and look at the video and see.
It was when we did the other uh city administrator, the full council was in on the.
The initial five.
Vinnie, it was a video, yeah, we were down in the corner opposite. And then, of course, the whole council did, but the three in first.
Well, we have two councils all need a special meeting. Keep that in mind, too. Dan, you're, Joe is, is the other.
I. You don't remember, other than, yeah, the hiring committee just narrows it down. For the full council, but. Uh but exact number really matters, three to five, or the full council, and. If the hiring committee decides that they're only gonna talk to five or ten, or all thirty, seven, seven of them, I guess. So be it, obviously, they're not, we're not qualified, we wouldn't, but.
So what we're suggesting is that the hiring committee, which is. Dan and Tom. Joe. Cynthia and myself.
And Brian.
And Brian.
And Brian, sorry, Brian. Me. We already have with your top five, and then we can see if we can match, match them up, and if there's any disagreements, then you can. State your case for the five that you want and.
Let me bring all five, the council two, and your recommendation.
Okay.
I know, it's just coming up with a general number of five, for example. Let's let. Us all interview the five together, whittle it down, maybe. There's a couple that we whittled out that maybe someone else would have seen more, more better, you know. My thoughts is, kinda have three buckets. Each committee member. One bucket is, yes, I definitely wanna talk to this person, another bucket is, I'm on the fence, and the other one is.
No.
No. And then, so then you look at those three buckets, see what everybody else has.
Right.
Okay, so all right, you got eight that are definitely a no. Then you, right away, right off the bat, just kinda kick them, they're hurt, so to speak, right? Maybe it's more than eight, I don't have a wrong number out there, but uh that way it's, you don't have necessarily, you already. Right, we found each and every one. Individually, okay, we're on the same page, that's it, you know. Could be a twenty five that are up in the. Top three to begin with, and then. So through our studies, uh state, there's, so we have to approve them soon.
There was somebody from Illinois, Florida.
So, yeah.
Um. But if we did the first round and interviewed virtually, that would be. That would work, I would think, and I don't know that in, you know, a state like.
Well, sure. But you third.
Yeah, there is.
So we, um Cynthia, let's send out an email and just check the availability of the hire, the full hiring committee report on your Tuesday.
I don't have a super strong opinion about it, but I would probably say that committees narrow, come together, narrow down five, bring those five to council. And then proceed.
So we require a special meeting, however.
Yes.
I like it.
Right, hey, check your schedules if you're on any, in something, there Tuesday.
Okay. So Monday or?
I'll say it right off the bat. My daughter's giving a very thanks the following weekend, so I would probably be saying my opinion. That's just for not then, rather than I, but that's more important. Family golf family. Right. The one, so.
Okay. Uh I think we, we have what we need to proceed, right, yeah? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number twenty seven. The claims list, anybody have any question on the bills to be paid? Hearing that, need a motion to approve paying the bills.
Motion. Sir.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
And number twenty eight, opportunity for citizens on the agenda, anyone like saying that they're at the end here?
Barbara, one on one Williams Boulevard, your facts. Uh I just have one thing to say, and uh. It's a quote from former president Ronald Reagan. Trust. But verify. Trust, but verify. You know, any decision that y'all make here in bids and buying stuff and doing new things and hiring people, trust. But verify, it's pretty simple, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Now move on to twenty nine, Bear's comments, I don't think I have anything else to say tonight. Cynthia, anything else?
I was looking uh forward to the November meeting, the right, second Tuesday in the month is November eleventh, Thursday, which is a federal holiday that we have a hot. Uh the Tuesday before that would be election day, so that, of course. You have the preference to when we would meet in November, I guess I don't have to know today, but. I'll be thinking about it, so.
Not the first or second, I think.
Not first or second Tuesday, oh, you don't, you don't want the Wednesdays.
First Tuesday.
Okay.
Well, never mind, my suggestion was the sex Wednesday. I, I will build me.
So if you wanna check your schedule, see if you're available Monday that's happening.
Mondays are okay.
Yeah.
I will pencil that in, but um I'll send, remind you where to be checked.
As of now, I'm good.
Okay.
And can I throw a public passage out there? A lot of energy, we'll be giving a presentation at the P N T next Tuesday, if any councilman can be there.
We can't have more than two, perhaps, I'm here.
They could be there to listen, uh but they, they can't uh deliberate, you know, as, as council members. But they, yeah, they could be there as residents and to listen to a presentation, okay?
Anything else? All right.
Okay. You got to keep them.
All in favor?
I don't know, I don't. I just, that's six or seven. Seven o'clock, you forgot. I enjoy my chair.